The following meeting is in order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, September 28th, 2020, and the time is 7:00 P.M. We are present this evening in the Northfield High School Media Center in accordance with Governor Walz State's plan. This room has been set up in accordance with the plan's social distancing guidelines. In addition, all those present at the meeting will be wearing face coverings for the duration of the meeting. Also attending tonight's board meeting via teleconference are Erin Bailey, Director of Community Education, and Val Murgastorff, Director of Finance, and our District Youth Council presenters Chloe Rajga and Michael Malika. This meeting is open to the public via livestream. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the district website as soon as possible. Dr. Hillman, there are a number of items in the table file.
Yes, in this evening's table file, we have the slide deck that's accompanying the District Youth Council update. We have a number of personnel items, including appointments, increase, decrease, change in assignment, leave of absence. We also have the revised lease agreement between the Northfield Gymnastics Club and the Northfield Public Schools for your approval. And we also have an additional piece for the proposed 20 payable 21 property tax levy that includes an estimated tax impact statement. That is the table file for this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. If there's no objection, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Moved by Jeff, seconded by Amy. All those in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We now have an opportunity for residents, business and property owners, parents, students, and employees of the Northfield Public School District to address the board. To accommodate the public comment portion of our meeting, we made available on the district's website the ability for the public to submit feedback to the board via email by 5:00 P.M. today. All submissions that follow the district policy regarding public comment will be read now by myself, board chair. We have eight public comment submissions this evening. I'll begin. Dear members of the Northfield School Board, I'm writing to express my strong support of Policy 809. My husband and I have a first grader in the district and a three-year-old who will be there eventually. I'm also a graduate of the Northfield Schools myself, and I'm so happy to live in this community and send our kids to school here. I attended Sibley for fourth and fifth grade. When I finally learned about the U.S. Dakota War long after graduating from high school, I will never forget the shock and sadness I felt when I realized that my sweet elementary school was named for Henry Sibley, a man responsible for violent crimes against Native Peoples. I believe that if we want to continue claiming that our Northfield Schools offer a world-class education, we need to imagine a new world, one that is better and more than just than the one we live in now. This is one step in that direction. Thank you for your consideration and for all you do for the school district and community. That was submitted by Betsy Alister. Our next submission is by Michael Purcell. My wife and I have two young boys at Sibley Elementary, and our family strongly supports the proposed policy that would prohibit the district from naming school buildings after individuals. Sibley Elementary is a specially troubling example of the type of offense this policy would prevent, and a name change is long overdue. Though Henry Sibley is celebrated for contributions to our state's government and early expansion, he's also known for his extensive military campaigns against Native Peoples, whose land we now occupy. He was a brutal enforcer of broken treaties whose action against the starving Dakota nation led directly to the largest mass execution in American history. In other words, Sibley was hardly a role model for Northfield's youth. But more importantly, imagine for a moment having to send your own child to a school in a building named for a man lauded for slaughtering your kin and driving them from their land. That's a trauma that shouldn't be inflicted on anyone in our community, much less our children. We can't rewrite our history, but we do have control over which parts of the past we choose to honor and elevate. Henry Sibley is not and has never been worthy of that honor, and it's time to make a different choice. The naming policy proposed would give Northfield an opportunity to make that choice and prevent other similar offenses in the future. Thank you for following your conscience in this matter. Michael Christie, Henry, and Franklin Purcell. The next letter submission is Peter Nelson. Dear members of the Northfield School Board, I write out in behalf of me and my wife, a graduate of Northfield Public Schools. Our daughter is a second grader, and we have another child who will start kindergarten next year. We write in support of Policy 809. Names hold significance, and it's harmful to students and community members to have a building named after a man who perpetuated violent crimes against the Dakota People. Thank you for your work on this important matter. Peter and Jane Becker Nelson. Our next submission is by Kristin O'Connell. Hello, we would like to voice our strong and enthusiastic support for the idea of renaming Sibley Elementary School. We do not believe that Sibley's life and legacy represent our children well, which included executing hundreds of Native Americans. We are excited at the prospect of choosing a school name that better embodies the values of our community as inclusive, diverse, and welcoming. Our fifth-grade daughter states, "Sibley was someone who killed for his benefit, but the students at this elementary school want to learn to help others. We should change the name to something that represents us. We learn friendship and kindness." Thank you for proposing the school renaming. Kristin O'Connell, Jonathan Cooper, Eliza O'Cooper, and Rowan O'Cooper. Next submission, Andrea Mazarello. Hi all, and thank you for the opportunity to comment on proposed Policy 809. My name is Andrea Mazarello, and I have two children in the Northfield School District. I tried to model for them that we can learn about the past as a way to do better in the future. This policy does just that. It says that we acknowledge our violent and problematic history, that we pledge to each new generation to reset our intentions and renew our commitments to those we are obligated to serve, and that public education can lead and light the way. This submission is by Sam Steinberg. To members of the Northfield School Board, my name is Sam Steinberg, and I'm a parent of a fourth grader, first grader, and preschooler in the Northfield School System. I'm writing to express my strong support for Policy 809. Symbols, whether we intend them to or not, speak loudly about our beliefs. When there are buildings in our district named after individuals who perpetuated systems of racial violence and oppression even a long time ago, we send the message that we don't truly support all children. In the same way, our actions also speak loudly about our beliefs. Ensuring that our buildings' names do not honor a violent past will not fix those systems of violence and oppression, but it will signal to the public and our students that we are starting that difficult and essential task. Thank you for your time and service to the community. Again, Sam Steinberg. Next submission is by Emily Moll. Greetings. I would like to send a brief message in support of Policy 809. As a parent of a student who attends Sibley and is a new resident of Minnesota, I was distressed to learn exactly the role that Sibley played in Minnesota history and interactions with Native Americans. How will my children learn about this history, and what would they think about their school bearing this name? I support changing school names to be more inclusive and welcoming of all. It will help me to raise more aware children, I believe. Thank you, Emily Moll. Our last submission is by Mara Cox Steinberg. To members of the Northfield School Board, my name is Mara Cox Steinberg, and I'm a parent of three children in the district and a graduate of the Northfield Schools myself. I'm writing to Burge to support Policy 809. Though the harmful acts of individuals such as Sibley and Longfellow happened in the past, we are continuing to honor them in the present when buildings named after them. We need to show support of all students, and part of that is making sure no one has to learn in a building named after someone who committed violence against their ancestors. Thank you for the service to community and your consideration of Policy 809. Again, Mara Cox Steinberg. Okay, those are our public comments for the evening. Dr. Hillman, announcements and recognitions.
Yes, I have one announcement this evening, and I want to share with the board. What I'm holding up here is the latest edition of the Minnesota School Board Association Journal, and you should have all received this in the mail. And what we're really excited about is, Northfield High School art teacher Catherine Norrie stopped down to see me. I've just gotten a copy of this. And she pointed out to me, if I looked inside on page seven, in the lower right-hand corner, it talks about that MSBA thanks art instructor Catherine Norrie and her Northfield High School students for sharing their art in this issue. So the cover was done by one of our students, now a graduate. And then as you go through the entire issue, all of the art that accompanies all of the different articles are by Northfield High School students. And of course, we are incredibly proud of our fine arts programs, and we're thrilled that an organization that we belong to, that we have such respect for, MSBA, chose to highlight our artists in an entire issue. And the feedback that we got was, this is a high school art program. People at MSB were very heartwarming to see how skilled our artists are. So I wanted to make sure that board members were aware of this. I want to make sure that the community was aware that, once again, our arts programs are highlighted at a state level, and we appreciate all of the art instructors that we have, kindergarten through twelfth grade, that really bring fine arts alive for our students. That's my only announcement.
Excellent.
Normally, I would pass this around. Tonight, I won't. So look for your own copy in your mailbox.
Amy, you have something to add?
I just want to say to anybody who's watching that KYMN has a really nice election guide out there for all of our local offices, but especially for the school board, which we're blessed to have eight people running for four spots. So I encourage everybody to go to the KYM website, go to the upper left-hand corner, and click on Election Guide.
That's excellent. We appreciate Kim Radio's work on that. We've had, I personally have had a number of people ask me where they can go and get information, so that's really helpful. Thank you, Amy. Other announcements or recognition? Okay. So we will move on to our first discussion report, one of our favorites of the year is when the District Youth Council provides an update to us. So tonight, we have Chloe Rajga and Michael Malika, and they are co-chairs of this year's District Youth Council. And just as a reminder, their presentation was in the table file. So welcome, Chloe and Michael.
Hi, thank you for having us today. My name is Chloe Rajga, and I'm a senior this year at Northfield.
My name is Michael Malika, and I'm also a senior this year. We are the chair of the District Youth Council for the 2020 to 2021 school year, and we're excited to give you a brief overview of what DYC has been doing.
Next slide. So, start off, our mission is to foster connections between the school board, administration, and the student body. Next slide.
So this year, we have a new organization of subcommittees. First, the Communications and Connections Subcommittee, which is led by Sibley Hansen, will be focusing on outreach to the student body and communication with the administration. Then we have the Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee, which is led by Amelia Arnold, and they are focusing on improving comfortability for all students in South. Lastly, we have the Well-Being Subcommittee, which is led by Bron McDermott, and they'll be focusing on improving the overall well-being and mental health of students in Northfield and providing information, resources, and overall making the district a more user-friendly place to be.
Next slide. So meetings this year will look a little bit different than they have in the past. We will still be meeting every second and fourth month, save the month, but due to COVID-19, we have had to do some adjustments, as everyone has this year. For our first meeting each month, we will be in-person at a venue that supplies us with enough space to make sure all eighteen of us, plus Malia, will be able to appropriately social distance. Masks will be required, and these in-person meetings will serve as a subcommittee work time where the individual subcommittees can work on projects together without having to deal with the issues of technology. Our second meeting each month will be a larger Zoom, where we talk about school board meetings, committee meetings, subcommittee project updates, and any other important information we have gathered over our time away. Dr. Hillman and Dr. Iverson will be present for these Zoom meetings when possible. We arranged our schedule this way this school year in order to be the most productive and efficient. Next slide.
So a lot has happened since you guys last heard from the DYC, so here are a few updates. Next slide. So in December of last year, the Diversity Subcommittee hosted the first Youth Excelling Achievement Data Summit, where we brought multiple school districts together to raise awareness about the achievement gap and brainstorm ideas and ways to close the gap. Students from Waterville, Lees, Moorestown, Tri-State United, Fairville, and Northfield formed relationships together and put their critical thinking skills to use. A post-data summit survey was sent out, and the results were quite shocking. Out of sixty-three responses, the survey showed that 100% of attendees learned something new at the summit, and that 98.4% of them would recommend attending a summit like y'all. We're hoping to have follow-up meetings and a possible additional summit once things are back to normal. Next slide.
In the spring, once COVID-19 hit our district, state, and country in full force, Northfield Public School District's nutrition staff was hard at work making meals, practicing them, and distributing them for free to anyone eighteen and under in multiple locations around Northfield. We, as District Youth Council, decided to use our platforms to spread awareness that meals were so accessible to everyone. After we made multiple posts and a video promoting the free lunches, we asked Northfield students to submit notes and thank yous to the nutrition staff for everything that they were doing for us. Then, to express our gratitude and say thank you to all those wonderful people, we dropped by all of the staffs to deliver cards with notes from students and targeted gift cards to all the staff. Thank you. Next slide.
Although we've only met once this year, we have a few plans for the upcoming 2020 to 2021 school year. Next slide. So the Communications and Connections Subcommittee plans on doing a school board candidate forum for the upcoming election. It is planned to be all virtual and then on a Wednesday so that students can watch it, no matter what cohort they're in. After the election and when it is possible, we hope to do another school board lunch to get to know the school board member. And finally, they have been connecting and engaging with students throughout the summer and school year using Instagram. Next slide.
So what Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee will be focusing on this year is conversations about pronouns to make sure everyone in the building and buildings across the district are aware and understanding of how to use proper pronouns, how to ask, and how to apologize if mistaken. The next thing that they'll be working on is supporting the Black Indigenous people of color in our community and our schools. So as you know, things have been tough and sensitive throughout the past few months, and we want to make sure everyone has as much support as possible and as much support as they need. And the last thing that we see our Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee working on this year, as of right now, is starting conversations about the land use acknowledgement in Northfield. So Amelia Arnold mentioned that she might want to create or look into creating a land acknowledgement for the Northfield Public Schools. She thought we might partner with other youth on boards programs and talk to the Carlton professor who recently gave a presentation about that. Next slide. Then, lastly, our Well-Being Subcommittee will be working on the test calendar that they started last year, which is to put up in the staff lounge to make sure that teachers can try to accommodate students who have many tests in one day and try to schedule that to spread it out so that stress and anxiety about taking tests isn't all loaded up on one day. The next task that they'll be tackling is mental health resources and making them more accessible for the school. And we will be doing lots more surveying for the student body this year on multiple different things. Next slide.
So if you guys have any questions, we are open to ask. Enter them.
Excellent. Thank you, Chloe and Michael. Questions, comments from the board? Ellen?
Thank you so much for your presentation. It's really exciting to think about what you guys are planning for this year, and I appreciate you sort of giving some of a recap of some of the things that you did last spring. But I also want to acknowledge how much you were instrumental. They met every week in the spring and provided this student voice back to us real-time on issues, and how incredibly helpful that has been to have you as sort of the eyes and ears, even virtually, on the ground. And so it's really exciting to hear about your plans this year and what a strong program that it sounds like you have going.
Excellent. Thank you. Other questions, comments? Amy?
I just want to agree with what Ellen said, that I think you have some great plans here and very ambitious, and I hope COVID doesn't slow you down and that you find a way to keep moving forward these and making all of these different ideas come together. Thank you for presenting tonight.
Other questions or comments?
Well, I would just like to add to the comments being made. It's just really always exciting for us to hear about what you do, and I think there's a saying out there, your say-do ratio. And I feel like the District Youth Council has a very high say-do ratio. So we know when you commit to these goals that you will work hard to work on them. It's great to see the continuity of the issues that you choose to focus on and that your continued commitment to these really important issues. Question, you two were really involved particularly with the Data Use Summit. Michael, you designed that amazing logo, and Chloe, you're one of the MCs of a day that we understand was just beyond expectations in terms of how successful it was. And just really tell us a little bit about what you thought of the summit and just sort of your perspective of the day. We've heard some debrief, but not having seen you two, it would be great to hear firsthand.
So it was really nice or cool to see how we presented the data to everybody, and then conversations from there just naturally flowed out and what each district talked about and then what each small group talked about. It was just really interesting to see how one school went in a way of, like, student representation on the school board, and then one school went into, like, English learning and things like that. So it was really cool to see how many different paths one set of data can go. So.
Excellent. Thank you.
My other favorite part of the day and the experience was just meeting everyone there. Like, there were so many different, like, representatives of students represented at the summit, and it was just awesome. I went into it so nervous, because I was speaking, I was in front of everyone, in front of, like, almost a hundred people. And I ended up just being so comfortable around everyone and making friends that I'm still in contact with today across the school district. So I think building relationships between everyone in the different areas was one of the biggest successes of the day.
That's excellent. Thank you. And then I'm curious, interested, and really happy to see that you're reaching out on social media. I know, you know, so many of you spend time coming to board meetings, and you spend time meeting as a group, and it's just really great to see that you're engaging in the means to really communicate to the more broader student body. I think that the District Youth Council has rightfully earned a great reputation with the student body, but there's always, you know, information out there and ways to continue to really highlight the work that you do. And so it's great that you are doing that. I think that will really significantly help the work that you do, but also awareness. And then lastly, of course, your attitude of gratitude is just really heartwarming, that you reached out to the people who were frontline workers, you know, at a very uncertain time. And so it was really great to see that you were able to provide that gratitude, that show of gratitude to the people who have worked incredibly hard. So we're very proud of you.
We love doing it, so it's no problem.
All right, great. Dr. Hillman?
I just want to emphasize, great report, as always. These are amazing young people, of course, that remind us every day why we do this. And I just want to really emphasize the work that the District Youth Council does on our committees in the district. Dr. Iverson and I talked with the DYC two or three years ago now about how do we make sure that student voice is amplified in meaningful, ongoing decision-making? And every member, I think every member of the District Youth Council serves on at least one committee. Am I right with that, Chloe and Michael? Okay? And so I happen to have the pleasure of serving on almost all of those committees. And when our District Youth Council people speak, the adults in the room stop and listen because the value of the perspective that our high school students around the District Youth Council bring is really valued by the staff on those committees, it's been valued by the board members, it's been valued by the community members on those committees. And I think that there's, you know, there's one thing to talk about elevating student voice, there's another thing to actually do it. And I think that we have done that because we have had students like Chloe and Michael who are willing to come to some of these meetings that frankly, you know, sometimes get pretty deep into the weeds. They stay engaged, and they help us with decision-making. And so I think it is a true example of elevating student voice, and I couldn't be more proud of the work that you're doing. But talking about this year's plans is great. I just want to emphasize that there's a lot of work that happens in those committees. So thank you.
Excellent. Well, thank you to you, Chloe and Michael, for all your amazing work. And please pass along our appreciation to all the District Youth Council's members for the work that you do. Okay, and you are more than welcome to leave the meeting. Okay, good. Thank you.
I'm going to put them as an attendee now so that they can still watch, but they...
Okay, excellent. So we'll move on now to policy committee recommendations for discussion. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, so in our ongoing effort to bring policy to the board in smaller digestible segments, we have two policies this evening. Unlike some of the other policies that we have talked about in the past, this is a new policy, similar, we brought you a new policy a couple of meetings ago, the new Title IX policy. We have two new policies that have come through the policy committee for your consideration this evening, 809 and 810. They come to you, the first one, 809, is about naming of school buildings or facilities. And when we looked at potentially considering a different name for the new elementary school, which of course we ended up saying we were going to call it Greenville Park again, and then subsequently defining a process for how we would rename the former Greenville Park Elementary to be the Northfield Community Education Center, it came to people's mind that we really probably should have some more organized approach or parameters to how we would name facilities, not only now, but in the future. So we brought that to the policy committee. And the policy committee includes, has included Rob and Noel and Ellen right now, and we've also had two members of the District Youth Council. So we looked at a number of different school districts across the state and some across the nation, and what schools had policies about how they might name school buildings or facilities. We took those, and we looked at how it applied to our circumstance. And so the policy that is before you is very straightforward. It simply outlines for you the procedures or the guidelines, excuse me, for naming school buildings or facilities. In the general statement of purpose, it talks about that our Northfield Public School shall ensure that namings preserve the longstanding traditions, values, culture, and prestige of the school district. The naming of school buildings or facilities is the responsibility of the school board, and when naming a building or facility, the board may select the name itself or appoint a committee to make a recommendation to the board. That's the general statement of policy. Then it gets just very specific. It simply says, here are the standards. Facilities may not be named for individuals or families, either historical or contemporary. School buildings may be given names which are indicative of the areas which they are located. This includes but are not limited to the names of neighborhoods or townships, natural features such as bodies of water or characteristic flora. And then it gives some very specific direction about district-wide facilities, saying that sites that serve a district-wide function should be named to illustrate the nature of their role in the school district. The Northfield Community Education Center, for example, is very clear about what is inside of that facility. And then just recognizing that we do have two existing facilities that do not meet that current or this proposed criteria, the policy then says existing facilities that don't comply with those standards would be renamed within one year of the adoption of this policy. So this policy came out of the work that we did to determine the name for the Northfield Community Education Center. It was clear that we need to have some kind of protocols for the future, and when we have something this close in our rearview mirror, the policy committee felt it was time to look at that. You also know that we have had several requests over the years to consider the naming of our facilities and that there are some controversies around some of the current names of our facilities. And so that was very straightforward, was part of the discussion as well. When we think about how do we handle a circumstance like that, the board's job is policy governance. And so the policy tool is what is being used to not only address for the future, but also to respond to some of the criticism, the current criticism that the board has taken. So that's 809. 810, the next policy, talks about naming, how we might use sponsorship. And some school districts actually have policies like 809 and 810 together. They're in one policy. That's actually how we started. We started looking at one policy, and then as we got down the road, the policy committee felt it was really important to separate those two. Now, it is becoming more and more common to see sponsorship of certain spaces within a school facility. You're not seeing corporate sponsorship of a school building, but you are starting to see this happen in various spaces. I'll give you one example. I'll give you one example. Cassin Mantregill School District to our southeast, they did a fairly major renovation of several buildings a few years ago. And when they had a dramatically upgraded performing arts center, it is sponsored by, it was sponsored by the Minnesota Wi-Fi. So it's the Minnesota Wi-Fi Performance Arts Center. And as we talked about this in the Policy Committee, we know that there have been discussions about this in the past. How do we manage people who want to sponsor a part of one of our facilities or some kind of equipment, or maybe they want to sponsor some materials? We've had companies and businesses reach out asking if that's something that they could do. We've done some of it ad hoc over the years. You see people's sponsorship on scoreboards and things like that. Again, having some kind of approach to managing that in the district, we think is an appropriate piece. Again, considering that we are seeing sponsorship, which has been very popular in both professional and the college ranks, especially in athletics for so long, we have started to see this become more of the norm in other states and you've started to see it come in some cases to Minnesota. So 810 again is really about the sponsorship. What it does, it talks about that we're going to have a written agreement. It talks about that they're not going to be, sponsorships wouldn't be granted to business foundations or other corporate entities whose products or practices run counter to the mission, vision, and the policies of the district. And of course, that determination is made by the board. You get to determine whether or not a proposed sponsorship, you know, would meet those criteria or not. It gets into some technical details about can you transfer it to another company? So Company A gets bought out by Company B. Can that sponsorship get transferred to Company B? And then it just goes through some very specific pieces about how you would put that sponsorship together and then how you might terminate it. And of course, one of the key things is that the board would always have the right to terminate that sponsorship agreement, should we choose to do that. Now, this policy does not mean that we have to have one sponsorship at all. It simply puts it, would put into play a set of protocols, should that be something that we want to consider down the road. And to be very clear, we're talking about financial remuneration for sponsorship. So we are talking about a paid sponsorship of either a space, equipment, or materials in the system. To be super clear, this does not apply to school buildings itself. So you could not have Company A District Shop. You know, we've purchased the shop lately, right? We call that the, you couldn't have the Hilliard District Shop. That wouldn't be allowed because that's the name of an entire facility. Something within a facility, it is possible that we could allow some sponsorships. And it could potentially provide a small revenue source as well. So again, not saying that we never have to have a sponsorship, but we know it's becoming more and more common and we think a set of protocols to govern it would be a wise idea. So those are the two policies. Tonight is the first reading. There is no vote this evening, but we wanted to bring these, just as we've been bringing policies to you, as we resurrected the Policy Committee a couple of years ago now. And you've seen us bringing you a steady stream of policy updates, changes, and some new recommendations along the way as well. So that's the frame of the policy. And I don't know if other Policy Committee members want to weigh in and share their perspective of how this has been developed over the past couple of, this one over the past six or seven months or so.
I can open it up for questions and comments board members have, and then if Policy Committee members want to elaborate. Amy?
I'm really happy to see these policies. And I have a comment and a question. First, my comment is, I'm just thinking in how people will be finding these policies and they'll be searching for them. And since there is overlap between the two policies, I think it's wise to keep them separate. But it would be nice if there was some reference to the other policy in each of the policies. I think especially in Policy 810, because the word facilities is used in both policies and I just would want to make sure that people reading 810 understand that there's a separate policy for naming of buildings. Just so that it's very clear. It can be in parentheses at the bottom or something, but it'd be nice to point them to the other policy. And then my question is, under 3B, transferability and renewability, and it talks about if a sponsorship is granted by a written agreement, those rights may be transferred, but other sponsorships are not transferable. I was just wondering if you could give me an example of what an other sponsorship would be that doesn't have a written agreement, because it just seems like everything should have a written agreement.
That's a good point. I don't have a good answer for you right now. We'll go back and take a look at that part. I think you pointed out an important flaw in the language.
And that's all. Thank you.
The reason that first readings are so productive. Thank you, Amy. Other questions, comments? Jeff?
Yeah, thanks for all your work on that, the people that worked on these policies. You know, one thing that we missed a long time ago, we had, which I don't know how that would have worked, the Hozie family had a wonderful company, packaging company here, Rightway. And we weren't able to find a bigger facility for them to keep them in Northfield when they moved to Lakeville and consequently they built a really nice, sponsored, a very nice ice area out there. So it's named Hozie Ice Arena. So I understand, you know, for sports facilities and things, you know, you, with this naming, you would have Ice Arena, but you might have it would be sponsored by, it could be Fieldhouse or a Fine Arts thing. It could be, you'd call it whatever it is, but it could be sponsored by and then just not name the building after it?
Yeah, Jeff, so in that example, what I would say would be that the, sorry, I'm getting a little feedback here. In that example that you provided, I would say that in the case of some kind of athletic facility, and I'll just use that term, athletic facility, the Policy 809 and 810 would not allow us to name the building that way. So it would need to be something, it would be a district-wide facility. So that would need to be named for its purpose. So I'm just going to use the example, Northfield Athletic Facility. Now, once you're inside of the building, there could be components of it that you could have a sponsorship for. So using your example, I would use the old Metrodome example where it was Mall of America Field, you know, at the Metrodome. Theoretically, the board could choose to allow someone to sponsor a playing surface, the locker rooms, the grandstand, the scoreboard, things inside of the building. The building itself would need to be named for its specific function if both of these policies were to pass. But within the facility, you could actually potentially have sponsorships from multiple corporate entities identifying that they would be able to, that they would be able to sponsor various parts within the facility. So while the entire facility under the current language wouldn't be allowed to be named that way, there are parts, ones you would walk in the door, that you could.
Yeah, I don't know, did you look at, the committee look at any other of the names of, I'll say, elementary schools in the district? Actually, I did. What I found is, what I call generic, and I'll go through these briefly, but 42%, there's basically 31 in the Big Nine, and I might be off by just a little bit, but not that much, 31 elementary school buildings in the Big Nine. And I'll name them, but about 42% are named after presidents and 35 are kind of generic. There's two governors, and I'm sure you know that there's two Sibley elementaries. Does anybody know where the other one is?
Albert Lee.
Albert Lee. So we've got two of those. And I'm up for, and I'm not going to defend Henry Sibley's behavior or his past. I'm more interested in the process of what we do moving forward. Obviously, that can be brought up and debated to keep that. And if they decide however that process is, I'm more interested in process than politics and whatever. So I mean, I'm not going to defend Mr. Sibley or anyone else on that. I'm more interested in, obviously, maybe you'd have a, I mean, you have a school that's here since 1963, you just need really good reasons to not have that name. And I think that, you know, reasons to keep, reasons to get, you know, get rid of, or change, and do that in a fair process. Albert Lee, Halverson Elementary School, Hawthorne Elementary School, Lakeville Elementary School, and then Sibley Elementary, Austin. Navella, I don't know what that is. Sumner, that's named after a senator, I think. Southgate, which is kind of generic. Banfield is kind of generic. Faribault, you have Jefferson Elementary, Lincoln Elementary, and Roosevelt Elementary. So three presidents. In the Mankato area, nine elementaries, three are kind of what I call the generic that you're talking about in a sense, and then the other six are presidents. So it's, they're all elementary. So it's Bridges, Eagle Lake, Franklin, Futures, Hoover, Jefferson, Kennedy, Monroe, Washington. Northfield, you know, obviously we have Bridgewater, Greenville, and Sibley. Owatonna, four schools, Lincoln, McKinley, Washington, and Wilson, all presidents. Red Wing, really kind of three generic and one president. I would say Twin Bluff, Burnside, unless that's named after a, I don't know if that would be named after somebody. Jefferson's obviously a president, Sunnyside. And then, so that's pretty much it. So it's just, just out of this as a general, you know, idea, there's like 35% in the outstate in our conference that are, you know, those generic names. And then, so really the, it's about, so there's one senator and it's ironic that there's two governors and they're both former governors and they're both Sibley. So just as a little bit of context, you know, on that, and I also looked at, the school district started in 1874 and we haven't had a policy for 146 years. And I'm not, you know, not sure why we need one now in a sense, but I think that when you actually combined the naming, which is some things in here I don't agree with, with the sponsorship, I think there's some workable things, pieces in there. But, you know, I went into fact, I would have liked to have been invited on this committee or, you know, other future committees. But I'm also, you know, my mentor Ray Cox was huge about the public trust. And I think that the party that I represent here is the big tent party. It's Republicans, Democrats, and it's independent. We're all in a big tent. And I'm really interested in just having a fair process. One of the things that we've always done here in my 10 years is just had a long and fair process to figure these things out. And we, you know, the COVID is terrible and I think that we need to, you know, I don't know where you came up with the year, I'm not saying the year is terrible or not for making that decision, but, you know, when we can get some good, you know, robust discussion and debate, you know, with all the stakeholders and have that maybe a little bit in the language. I was going to say that I'm not opposed to naming buildings after, companies after, but I see where you're going with that. So it's not necessarily a bad thing and you actually can accommodate, you know, sponsorship things, you can actually accommodate that both ways. So I just wanted to kind of bring that up and I think that one interesting part is within, you know, why the one year? And I was also saying that, you know, timelines should be determined by the school board on a case-by-case basis. So, I mean, there's some, there's some other language in there that I don't necessarily agree with on 809. But I think that, you know, and I've looked through it, I'm going to look at the other conference schools and see what their policies are. And I think that they should, we should look at the Big Nine and see what their other policies are. And I would probably suggest some, you know, minor amendments and changes to 809 and maybe even 810. And then one of the things, when I showed this to a lot of other people, it was just, why the huge urgency? So the other, you know, idea that I got is, you know, you've got, you know, Rob's not going to be with us for the next election. He's not, Ellen and then Noel, so you've got three of those people that are up for elections before. So why not postpone this into the next, you know, election cycle and let the new board decide on that? But, you know, the other argument to that would be with some tweaks, you know, you're, you know, you can, you're still not deciding what the names are. But I would really like to heighten that process and see how we make it fair and how we can do things in next year, we can get some more people involved in robust discussions like, you know, you and have always done in the past and just make it more of a fair process. I mean, I actually had a name of a, I think it'd be a great name for an elementary school that's named after a person. It's not a political person, it's a name that's very, you know, well-known in Northfield. But I like bringing, you know, things up that you can vote on. If you have a vote, you know, just say no if you don't like that, or let's, you want to look down to three choices, or, I mean, I'd even like an informal poll or whatever with the public to pick names that they like or whatever. So, but anyway, those are my comments and I appreciate all your hard work.
I would just say that for the process portion, Jeff, you know, should the policy be approved? And again, we're not doing this policy any different than we do any other policy. But Jeff, I would assure you that if the policy were to pass, the one year was a matter of being long enough to be able to run up a fair process and one that brought stakeholder feedback, you know, while also making sure that there was an impact to it, so it's not something that would land, you know, going on for years. If you remember how we did the naming of the Northfield Community Ed Center, Erin Bailey, the director of the programs, reached out to stakeholders. We also reached out to a number of other partners and solicited a number of name suggestions. And Erin, I don't remember how many we ended up having, I think it was in the 20s or 30s, wasn't it?
No, it was over 100. I mean, some were repeat, but we had a little over 100 people that completed that survey.
So is that something we can consider for this?
Well, that's how we would do it. What we would do is...
Well, that's plenty, fair.
We would do some survey and then frankly, what we would do is we'd have a subset of the board that would, and myself, that would take a look at the suggested names. We'd bubble a handful to the top for the board to make the determination. So if the policy were to pass, that would be the similar process that we did. If you remember, we had, as we said, we had over 100 submissions. So we know people would participate, we know how to get their feedback. So we, of course, always commit to a process, but in order to commit to that process, the policy would need to be adopted first.
Other questions, comments? I'm sorry.
I was going to say, just one other example, just say, you know, Jeff Bezos gets in a good mood and he says, I'm putting out an idea that I'll give you 50 million bucks for a grant to name an elementary school after me.
The answer would be no.
Right, so, okay.
If you wanted to sponsor...
I'm not saying I'm for against that idea, I just want to sponsor something.
If you wanted to give us $50 million for a scoreboard, we could take that.
Right, okay.
But we would not be able to do that for a building.
All right, I'll let him know.
Other questions, comments? Rob?
Since, as Jeff points out, you only have five more meetings to hear me up here, I'll talk for a little while. So I just went, kind of written out something here so I don't get off track. And a lot of this has actually been said by some of the really good comments that were submitted. The primary purpose of this policy is to establish consistent standards for the naming of school district buildings. We have three elementary schools, only one of which bears the name of a person, Minnesota's first governor, Henry Hastings Sibley. This policy would require the school board to rename Sibley Elementary. This being the case, I would like to say a little bit about Henry Sibley. Sibley spent much of his career as a fur trader. He provided the Dakota with supplies on credit against the estimated value of the furs they would deliver at the end of the hunting season. The value of the furs on delivery was always less than the value of the supplies and the Dakota fell deeper and deeper into debt to Sibley and his employers. It was a system in which the traders held all the advantages and the indigenous hunters were easily exploited. In 1856, when Sibley took the lead in negotiating a treaty with the Dakota, he was acting not as an agent of the federal government, but as an agent of his employers, a trading company based in St. Louis and controlled by slave owners. His object in negotiating with the Dakota was first and foremost most to recoup the debt owed to himself and his employers. He even made this clear in his correspondence with them. Under the treaty which he negotiated, a large portion of what the Dakota received in compensation for their land went in a lump sum to Sibley himself in payment of those debts, while the Dakota were sent to a reservation and received only a small annuity. By 1862, the Dakota were starving. In desperation, some members of the tribe launched raids against the white settlers who were approaching on the reservation in western Minnesota. In response, Governor Ramsey sent Henry Sibley to put down the uprising. More than 1,000 Dakota men, Dakota were taken prisoner in the course of the war and Sibley, now Brigadier General Sibley, subsequently presided over the military tribunal that resulted in the public execution of 38 Dakota men in Mankato on December 26, 1862. One of the men who escaped execution that day because of President Lincoln's grant of clemency was a black man named Joseph Godfrey, who had been held in slavery in Minnesota despite its status as a free territory, before escaping to live with the Dakota on their reservation. During his years as an enslaved person in Minnesota, Joseph Godfrey had been hired out to serve Henry Sibley. Most of us in this room, mostly white people over the age of 50, probably learned in school that men like Henry Sibley were great men. And this is certainly one way of telling the story, but it's not the whole story. We probably never learned about people like Joseph Godfrey. We were probably never asked to look at this story from the point of view of the Dakota... We were probably never asked to look at this story from the point of view of the Dakota. But when the descendants of Little Crow or Joseph Godfrey tell this story, it's different from the story we were told. There is pain in their story that we in this room don't share, and there are present-day consequences that we have not been asked to suffer. By having a building named for Sibley, we are implicitly saying that one partial version of the story is more important and more valid than another. This is not what we as educators should be doing. We should be teaching the whole story, not out of partisanship, but out of a desire to understand how complex historical forces have shaped who we are as a people. We shouldn't erase Sibley, but at the same time, we shouldn't elevate him above his historical circumstances and make him an emblem. We can't change the past, but we can make more room in the present. Ever since I joined the board eight years ago, people have been contacting me and calling for the name of Sibley Elementary to be changed. Some people have suggested renaming it Wellstone Elementary, since Paul Wellstone was an educator with a long history in Northfield. But I would object to this on the same grounds that I object to honoring Henry Sibley. There are many stories to tell and many ways of telling each story. We should not choose one story and elevate it to a place above our doors where it will be taken as a singular and unchanging representation of who we are. We should keep those doors open for all of our stories.
Thank you, Rob. Other questions, comments? Ellen?
I just wanted to address the work of the Policy Subcommittee, and I thank you, Rob, for giving the historical background. I knew you would be able to provide more on that. But I wanted to address specifically, I wanted to thank Jeff for looking at the examples you had from the big nine. We had also looked at examples of policy. So the Subcommittee, Policy Subcommittee, in the 12 years I've been on the board, we've always had some subcommittees that have looked at policy, some more actively than others. Since Dr. Hillman has been superintendent, we've reinstituted a Policy Subcommittee that has met nearly monthly, and for the last three, four years now, we've been going through all the policies, and we've also been introducing where there is need for new policy. So this isn't a, a different process, and there's been different, I've been on it, I guess, quite, quite a long time, but we've had different board members have, as we appoint, as the chair appoints board committees, each year people get appointed to the Subcommittee, and this has been one of them. And we haven't in the past had the public vote on policies, because that's our job as, as board members. We, that's our job is policy, and we have a Subcommittee that brings it to the board, and we take time to look at the policy. So we weren't planning on voting on it tonight as a board. We very, very rarely vote on something that's policy on the first reading, unless there's some really timely reason from a legal standpoint. So I wanted to address in terms of, I'm not sure exactly what your comments in terms of fairness, but I wanted to just reiterate that we're not doing anything that we haven't done in the past, and this has always sort of been our process, and we wouldn't be voting on it tonight either. So I wanted to just speak to at least the, the process of how we as a board have developed policy and how we have moved forward in policy.
Thank you, Ellen. Tom?
I just wanna thank the Policy Committee for an excellent pair of policies, both of which I completely agree with. You know, the danger of naming, putting names of people on buildings is all concurrent, and I'll just say, if not now, when, you know, we, just if not now, when. So I'm glad we're, we're thinking about this, moving on it, talking about it, and going to vote on it. So thanks.
Thanks, Tom. Other questions, comments?
I had a comment on policy 809, 8, and 810. So we can start with policy 809. Under the A, letter A, the first subset there, letter A reads, "All district-owned facilities shall be named in accordance with the following standards," and then it says, goes on to read under point one, "Facilities may not be named for individuals or families." I would like to suggest that it should read, "Facilities shall not be named," if the board isn't being able to that change. So that would read, "Facilities shall not be named for individuals or families, either historical or contemporary," versus "may not."
Yeah, you just wanna have the agreement between the two, the introduction and the sub point.
Yes. So in the first, we say "shall be named," and then we go on to say "maybe," which, you know, "may" gives permission, "shall" is, is, you know, a word of command. So I think that, that strengthens that, the definition of that policy. Secondly, under policy 810, we just need to, I know that the committee worked initially with naming rights, and we changed it rightfully to sponsorship, because I think it, it actually explains and provides a much larger umbrella for those opportunities for specific areas of facilities, equipment, or materials. So there's just a few areas where we would need to change where it says "naming rights" to sponsorship. And I shall those to Anita to clean up that. So for example, under number three, naming rights, A, the, the first one there, it says, in the second sentence, "Financial have the authority to negotiate agreements for naming rights," that should say for sponsorship.
Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
And there's just a couple other areas where we do that.
Thought we got all of them, but apparently not.
Yeah, no worries, no worries. Just clean it, we're cleaning it up. I too want to thank the, the Policy Committee for, for their work on this. I think that, again, I think it's just when we have these opportunities for sponsorships, and in this case, if we look to where we are now with our district facilities, but also looking ahead for future facilities, I think it's really good practice to have a policy that addresses it. I think that, I thank Rob for his comments around, obviously, that if we pass this policy, we would look at needing to rename Longfellow and Sibley. Longfellow, I think, is a much more straightforward decision, because it is a district-wide facility. So there would be a naming that would indicate its usage as the District, Northfield Public Schools District Office and Alternative Learning Center. And in terms of Sibley, renaming of that school, I think the decision by the previous board to name one of our schools after Henry Sibley is one that we as a board in today's world have the opportunity to reconcile with the passage of this policy. So I am in support of, support of this policy. Clearly, we find ourselves living in a world where change can be fueled by the board's commitment to inclusive and welcoming schools. And to me, renaming Sibley is a tangible and significant way to signal our commitment to, to ensuring that we have inclusive and welcoming schools. So I do thank the board for their comments tonight, and for the consideration that they have given to this policy. I would just ask Jeff, you had talked about some language that you had some, some amendments, and I think if you have those now, or if you're able to provide those, we would need to, to have those amendments or vote at the next meeting on any amendments that you would propose to the language as part of the passage of the final policy 809 and 810.
You want to know?
I think if we can talk about those now, that will help us to really have the, the policy presented at our next board meeting for approval in its, in its best form.
I would just want to add a line on the general statement of naming the building, facilities, and responsibilities of the school board, which will, you know, the line, it was kind of more of a community line of, which will include a robust discussion and process with district stakeholders.
So you're on policy 809, I'm assuming?
Yeah, 809, yeah.
And then are you under general statement of policy?
Yeah.
Okay. And so where would that-
Right after it says "school board." I, I'm just adding, you know, adding that, because what I really liked about what we've done over the years is, is that good, you know, process.
So when naming, so, so the naming of school buildings or facilities is the responsibility of the school board? When naming a building or facility, the board may select the name itself or appoint a committee to make recommendations to the board? And you would like to add language?
I think, I think it maybe would fit after "school board," you know, see, the, the naming of the school buildings or facilities is responsibility to the school board, which will include, and you could say "and not limited to," you see, which would include, and that's just the part of engagement, community engagement that I like to put in there, of, which, which will include input and a robust discussion with district stakeholders, meaning we're reaching out to the public to get feedback.
Are board members willing to go? Oh, Dr. Hillman.
So Jeff, if you looked at, it might fit a little bit better, I, this might-
No, okay, I'm open.
-in the, in the last sentence, so I think if you were to go to that last sentence, so saying, saying something along the lines of, when the naming, when naming a building or facility, the board may select the name itself, or you could say something, "The board will engage the public," comma, "may select the name itself or appoint a committee." I think we could fit it into that last part to really talk more about, because what I hear you saying is wanting to make sure when we get to the point of doing naming, that there's stakeholder input. So my sense is that it would fit better in that last sentence, just to talk about that, and it probably fits better at the end, that when naming the, the building or facility, the board may select the name itself, because the board does have that right. A future board could choose to do that. Comma, engage the public and appoint, and/or appoint a committee to make recommendations. I think you just want to hear the words "engage the public."
Exactly.
Okay. I, I don't know how other people feel about that, we're not, it's not a vote, but I, I think there's a way, I think that's what the intent is of that committee part, and I think we can simply just do a little bit of tweaking on that to-
And you're, you're already doing that in the other process too, but when you got down to the final decision, even for the board to make, do we come up with three finalists? Or how, how did, how did you do that? I don't remember how we did it.
Yeah, so we, we did come up with, if you recall, we came up with four finalists.
Okay.
And then we asked the board to consider it. I would want to leave that portion of the policy open. We don't know what the future facility might be, and it, and it could be that there might be a future board that wants to have 16 semifinalists. And for, I think, making sure that, I, I think the policy here gives enough guidance with that addition, without being prescriptive to a future board.
So what's your, you know, you've been around a while, you know, what's the difference between three or four final choices?
Well, I think the, the difference between three, four, eight, I think it's about, you get to a point where you get too many finalists, now it becomes more difficult for the board to make the selection, and I think that we want to try to take a look at just a handful of finalists for the board to select. But boards, board members could also be on any kind of committee, they could also be involved in pairing the list down as a Subcommittee, just like the Policy Committee. So there's a variety of ways to do that, but I do think that this is the kind of thing that you want policy to provide enough guidance and direction without being prescriptive, because that's what a procedure is, right? A procedure is something that the administration implements that is a prescriptive piece. The policy is what directs us in how to handle that approach. So I think, I hear what you're saying, Jeff, something just to specifically say engage the public, I think that that's, that's what we were planning to do anyway, so I, I don't think there's-
Ah, you know, really, the way we've been doing things before, you know, if you come up with 100 names, you're gonna boil, you know, boil them down to three, four, or eight, and the board's still gonna pick what, what they're going anyway, so.
Correct.
Jeff, is that the amendment?
Yeah, that, that sounds fair. And I did, I mean, after it's further explained with the idea, and I do have, you know, when you talk about Austin, and I'm not familiar with that, but if you know with the, the Hormel country down there, and I, I haven't been down there to see what other facility they had, but did they, did they have like a field house or something that's named Hormel?
I do know that the Hormel Foundation has made several generous donations to the Austin Public Schools. I do not offhand know whether or not they have a, some kind of sponsorship on any of their facilities.
Right. But I, and I can see how with 809 and 810 with the sponsoring, how that can work together and keeping it consistent. Let's see. So, yeah, and the timeline thing, I mean, it was still, you know, why one year? You're just, you're picking that, and it's like you could, I mean, I'm, I'm basically saying timeline shall be determined by the school board, or in a case, on a case-by-case basis, but, I mean, that could even mean the way that I had that written, I mean, you could even do it quicker than a year, but I, I mean, I don't see any reason why, I mean, a year's okay, I guess, so. With that, I guess, you know, the big thing with me and as my mentor and friend, Ray Cox, always says, he says, "You really, you know, you really have to engage the, the public trust." And then, I mean, he's, you know, stated, and that's for a long, long time, the school district has had really a good relationship with, with the public trust of the schools. And I think that, you know, if we can be, continue to be transparent on all of these things, and, and, you know, that's a transparent and, you know, workable policy, then we're just showing that process, and we're not rushing it, that we're not just rush, rush. And I think that this, to me, to begin, would look a little bit to be rushed, but it's really not that rushed, because you still have a year, and you have a whole process to figure that out. Hopefully, you know, we can gather as, you know, somewhat normal people, you know, later in, you know, next year, or whatever, and, you know, get, get a lot more people that aren't, aren't really skilled at writing crafty emails that would just like to give some public comment and give us more input that way.
So I just want to clarify, are you okay with the language then around standards shall, that existing facilities that do not comply with these standards shall be renamed within one year of the adoption of this policy? Or is there some additional language you want the board to consider?
Well, I mean, you have a whole, I guess, what you're doing is you're changing the policy, then you're, and you're saying that you want to go back to compliance of the policy within one year, and I, I don't know if I could necessarily object to that.
So could the Policy Committee elaborate on that one year, what you're thinking was there? Because I just want to understand the thought process of that.
You want to take that one, Rob?
I think it's just, you know, we could say, maybe the calendar year, if it's passed now, we would say 2021, because you want, you're gonna have a new board, as you say, who will want time to, to figure this out. I think it's just that, you know, you appoint new people to the committee each year, and you, you don't want it to, to drag out and, and be out of compliance with the policy when you're constantly wanting to be, making sure that you are keeping up to date on, on your compliance with all your policies. So I, I think just giving it a, an end date, so that you can get, so that you're actually complying with your own policy is a good thing, and one year's just makes sense, because that's kind of, you know, the time that you are appointed to these committees to work on these things, and, so, I mean-
So is that one year from when the policy passes?
That, that's what the language says. I do want to say that I, I agree with what Dr. Hardy has said, and the fact that if we don't have a timeframe, it's, what we all know is if we don't have a timeframe, then things don't get done in a timely fashion. And you know how I feel about that, right? You know, that I like things done in a timely fashion. I think the second part of it is, what I would say, as you've heard me say it, if not a million times, maybe a million and a half, that I think the reasonable person says one year is plenty of time to get a process like this done. Now, I will tell you though, I, we're not gonna wait a year. I mean, I do think we have time for a very thoughtful process, but there's a tremendous amount of work that a name change has to happen with the state and within our systems and things like that, so that's going to take some time. But again, if you really think about it, a year is simply a piece to say, get it done within a reasonable timeframe. If I were to take this and we were to apply it, say, to the next meeting, I would backmap it to say, we would want to have a decision done by April of 2021. And the reason that we'd want to have a decision by April 2021 is so that Director of Finance Verdestorff and Chris Nessett, our Iowa, have the ability to start working with the state to get those things cleaned up and ready for the next fiscal year, because we do want to have whatever the name of the facilities are going with the fiscal year, because you don't do that, we have all sorts of issues with the state and just all the record-keeping systems, and it's gonna take a little bit of time. We know, we've, we've been brainstorming, what are the things we have to change? We know some of that for the changing of the Northfield Community Ed Center, it goes even to another level when you're talking about naming a, a specific facility like the existing Sibley Elementary School. But if you really think about that, even if we started that process in, that's still four months. If we think about the process that it took to determine to go to the voters, that wasn't any longer, you know, before they existed for the construction project. So I think, you know how we've run these things in the past. We are thorough, we are fair, we are inclusive. But it doesn't take eight months to make it happen. it happen, right? It's about the frequency of it, and I think we, I'm very comfortable that if the policy were to pass, we can provide a robust process that gives people an opportunity to provide their feedback, and their ideas, and their suggestions, and to be able to do that within just a few months. It is, it is going to, there's always some complication, right? When you have all sorts of ideas come to the table, but I, we put the year simply because we need to have an end date. And then the second part is, we truly need to get it, when we make the selection, there's a number of systems changes that have to happen to make sure everything is aligned. I still feel we can get plenty of opportunity, I know for a fact, we can get plenty of opportunity for people to participate and provide their feedback. That, that does not worry me at all, I think we can put together a process that this whole board will be very proud of.
So what would there be for a ticket price for a name change of, say, an elementary school?
Yeah, so here we're.
And what budget does that come out of?
Yeah, so that will be part of our planning, you know, for the 2021, '22 school year. We're already looking at those things. Some of the things that you think about are signage, right? So obviously, there's, and at Sibley, there's really only one sign that would need to be changed, and so, we're actually, I don't have the number for you yet tonight, Jeff, but we just recently did that. If you've been by 700 Lincoln Parkway, you see that the old Greenville Park letters are off the building, and Northfield Community Education Center is on. So there's that sign, that part of the signage. There would also be some things like envelopes, which, once the policy passes, we're not going to purchase any more envelopes until we have a new name. If we were to have existing envelopes, we would be very frugal, and we'd print stickers to put over the return address of the previous letters. The good news is, so many of our other things that would be costly are things that are done digitally. So in the old days, we would have had a bunch of letterhead, right? All that letterhead is now digital. There are some costs and expenses, but it is something by acting on it before we get into the budget process, we will be able to handle.
Amy?
A couple of comments sort of following my earlier comments. I do think that we need to show some way that these two policies are linked together, and one idea I had was having one be policy 809A, and the other being policy 809B. I don't know if our numbering system does that, but I think that might allow people to realize there's another part there. And I also wanted to say, I am concerned that the word facilities is used in both policies differently, and I think we might need to have a definition of facility, because otherwise, there's a loophole in the sponsorship line, because it does talk about sponsorship by facilities, and that could be a building, and so we have to be really clear with what we mean there.
I think we just missed taking out facility, so we'll clean that up to make sure that it is legitimate in that.
But the ice arena, you know, the ice rink could be the facility, but we're using facility to be a building, and we're using a facility to be a basketball court or something. So they're both true, that's why you have to differentiate what we actually mean with this. And then, again, I was talking about 3B on policy 810, and I just think we should require all sponsorships to be with a written agreement, and those rights may be transferred or renewed as permitted by the written agreement, and in the spirit of other sponsorships are not transferable or renewable.
I think Anita's got those down, and we'll make sure that we take, because that was clearly just a miss, we didn't catch that part before we got to.
Other questions?
So just to be clear, that with public input on the 809 to, the public can suggest names, but they still cannot be for individuals, families, or either historical or contemporary? Just make sure that's clear.
Yeah, well, people could suggest whatever they want, but the board wouldn't be able to move forward with that one.
We would give those guidelines in any sort of survey, but, you know, if someone were to miss that, we would, you know, not choose to go forward with those names as an option.
Other questions or comments? I appreciate the great discussion we've had. We have a little bit of cleanup to the policies based on recommendations I've not sensed that anyone is opposed to the amendments that, or the changes that people want to make to these, so we'll make those changes, and then these two policies will be voted on at our October 12th meeting. Okay, we'll move on now to our next item for discussion, which Dr. Hillman is going to provide an update on district operations and the anti-racism work for the 2020-21 school year.
Yeah, so this evening's report is really focused on just the last couple of weeks of, or the first couple of weeks, excuse me, of the school year, and I just want to share with you how thrilled we are with what took place during the family conferences. So I want to thank the board for your faith in our decision-making, and our recommendation to push the official start of instruction back to September 14th, so that we could meet with families. I'm proud to tell you that we had connections with over 2,200 families. When we do that calculation, that's roughly 89% of district families participated in a family conference, and so we were very pleased with that. Of course, if, as we move forward, if it's something that we continue, which I'm going to share with you, I think it's something we'd like to continue moving forward, we would, of course, want that number higher, but given the current circumstances, we give people all sorts of options, so they could come in face-to-face with a mask and physical distancing, we can conduct them via Zoom, we did some via telephone conference, but this is the first time that we've done something this large at the beginning of the school year, and the key thing is that, what I'm hearing from our faculty, is that they learn things about their students and their students' families, that in other years may have taken them a month or six weeks to have learned. You know, we do an annual Ready, Set, Go Day. We know that there's a short time where each family gets to talk to their teacher at the elementary level, but there's some assessments and some other things that are included. These conferences were 40 minutes, so there was a lot of attention, there was also some instruction, that our staff really shared with people how to use things like Schoology and CSOW, and explained how this year was going to work. So I just want to thank you, I want to show you the receipt, that we had almost 90% of families participate. We think that for the first time, that's an excellent number, we're really thrilled. We want you to know that we did do some self-reporting, and that 12% of our families reported being directly impacted by COVID-19. And so again, there's 12% of the families, you're talking nearly 300 families there, right? More than, a little more than 200, who we would not have maybe had that information having not taken the time to sit and talk with people. So we think that they were very successful, and we've had a lot of feedback from people of, how could we do something like this every year? So I'm looking at bringing to you a suggestion about the calendar, about how we might integrate a family conference approach moving forward. I want to share with you about COVID-19 plans and protocols, and the reports that we're getting from buildings. Each building has its own COVID-19 team that meets weekly. We have a district-level COVID-19 maintenance team that meets twice a week, and we are constantly asking, how is the, how are the protocols going? What we are hearing overall is that people are very satisfied with the protocols. We will measure that around MEA, we have worked with our partners from Student Education to develop what we call Pulse Survey, that we will be able to gain some information from people, how they're feeling about their safety, and some of those other kinds of things that we're looking at over the first month or so of school. But the disinfection, the hand washing and sanitizing, the traffic flow, lunch procedures, we feel that those are going well, and they are in a constant state of being refined. We have questions that come in, and building-level COVID-19 teams are handling them, we are routinely getting questions, could we do this? Would we be able to now do this since we understand what the traffic flow is going to be? Is, are we doing well enough in this area? So there's a number of really robust and productive questions, not about necessarily a concern about the level of safety, but how could we make the overall experience better? So we're very pleased with that to this point. As you know, our three levels are still in the same, our two levels are still in their same learning models. I described those again for you in the handout. One piece I just really want to give a huge shout out to is our child nutrition department, because you think about trying to serve lunch to a bunch of kids in the COVID environment, there's a lot of things that have to happen. And as I've said before, I think one of the things that is going to be forever etched in my mind about the pandemic is that our high school students have assigned the lunch seats, right? And we think about the high school lunch experience, that's something that we know is a very social time, but in order to effectively have contact tracing, should we have a case, we need to be able to know who was around each other, so that we are only having to exclude a few students, as opposed to dozens of students. I've had conversations with families across the district, the grocery store, other places, who have said, we've had some criticism of that example of a strategy that we're using to try to make sure that we have that contact tracing in place, but I've also heard from a number of parents who have said, yes, I'm not sure that my student likes it, but they at least understand why you're doing it. So I was really proud of that, because you know how important the why is? That students were understanding why we needed to do it, and also that in the hybrid model, it is only a couple of days a week. At the elementary level, the child nutrition department is experimenting with what we're calling restaurant-style service. So rather than the children going through the line, the child nutrition department is coming to the children, so they are spaced apart further than they normally would be. Of course, at the elementary level, in the in-person learning model, we're not required to have that strict six-feet of social distancing, but we're trying to get as close to that as we can. Students order their meals in the morning, they've experimented with a variety of creative ways of how to identify which person gets which lunch, so they've tried different colored paper clips at each spot, so that when they come through, the child nutrition person knows, yep, this student gets this meal. But they're literally rolling the meals out into the cafeteria and providing them. Again, it's intended to try to limit the interaction, limit those kinds of areas where we could potentially have greater risk of infection. In my 26 years, it's the oddest thing you've ever dealt with, right? I mean, it just, it is, it is, people are doing great despite it being abnormal. We hear people say, this is the new normal. I stop people, this is not normal. This is abnormal, there's nothing normal about this, but people are stepping up, and they are doing what they need to do to make sure that we can provide this in the best way possible. The Portage program, which is the all-the-time online learning program, over 600 students enrolled, we did get so many people that we had to rethink our strategy in that program at the middle school and high school. We did have to take a pause for a few days. We did not customize the courses to begin with, and there was some reports of overwhelm on the part of some of our middle school and high school students with the fast pacing of the content. We heard that from our learning coaches and from our families. So we had to make that hard decision just the Thursday of the first week, to say, we're going to take a pause, we're going to do some course customization, we've added some additional staff, 1.4 of FTE to be able to assist with the needs, and as we have unpaused it, it is, my understanding is that we have seen some dramatic improvement in that area. We actually know we are also seeing additional students who have an interest in that online program. I learned today that we have another 20 high school students who are interested in moving into that. So this is going to be something different about our staffing for this year, that we are going to have to look and adjust, because of course, we are required to be able to consider allowing students to move into that all-the-time online at their determination. Now, we will try to counsel and coach people about what's the best on-ramp, if you will, for that program, but what I want to know, I want you to be straightforward, that we had to take a pause, because there were clearly some things that we needed to work out. We have also, many of you know Carrie Duba, who is one of our instructional coaches. Carrie is taking on a larger day-to-day role. She has had some significant experience working in the online environment for credit recovery and things like that, so Carrie's addition to really having a more active day-to-day role in the program has already made significant difference. And I just, our learning coaches and the teachers at the elementary, they're doing a remarkable job. This is a, something that we're having to do as a result of the pandemic, that we most likely would have never considered doing in this way, but they are all taking it as an opportunity for us to learn, what are things that we are doing during the pandemic in this all-the-time online environment that we can leverage for the future. So I'm very pleased with what they are doing. It has been hard, it has been a challenge, because we're talking about building, as I've said, we're building the bridge as we walk across it, and when you're really in the middle of innovation, it can be messy a little bit, but we're very grateful for the students, we're grateful for the families who have expressed great understanding, and we're really thankful for our teachers and our coaches, who are helping us work through that part. Along that same line of just general operations, I want you to know that we've talked with you about how we have planned for substitute teachers, and so far, we have been able to handle most of the need that we've had to approach, because with the decision tree, if I have, my own child, you know, has one more common symptom, or two less common symptoms, I might not even be sick myself, but if someone in my household has that, I may need to stay home. And we're working hard to reverse those people into the classroom, so I walked by a classroom just recently where there was the teacher up on the screen, actually zooming into that classroom, teaching the lesson for the day. We still need to have some kind of adult in that room to monitor the students, and in some cases, that's someone from within the building who's being reassigned, and in some cases, it is a substitute teacher. You may recall that we hired two full-time substitute teachers a few years ago. We are having to hire new substitute teachers, new full-time substitute teachers, and I am considering authorizing the HR department for this year only to do a third, really just to make sure that we have people on campus every day to be able to help with those things as they come forward. So, so far, it's been so good, but I just want to let you know that I'm considering that as part of the work that we're doing to staff this thing to the best of its ability. Finally, along the lines of that, I want to share with you, not tonight, but at the next meeting, I'll be bringing a recommendation to you to add what we're calling pandemic leave for staff. So this would be an additional five days, this year only, that people could have access to, should they contract or be affected, I should say, be affected by COVID-19, because you can be affected in your leave in a number of different ways. We've done the math, we've worked with, this, because our sick leave bank is a district-wide policy, and not agreement by agreement anymore, we've done the math, we've worked with some of the larger, well, we've worked with the NEA, the Northfield Education Association, to take a look at, okay, if I am like a brand-new employee, what would it take, if I really were ill, what would it take to help get me to long-term disability? And so the things that we have in place, with the amount of sick leave that someone can access, the ability to join the sick leave bank that we have, and then adding, we've determined that five days is all we really need to be able to get a person to that point of long-term disability, in the worst-case scenario. Many of our employees have hundreds and hundreds of days of sick leave that they are able to use, should they need to use that. In the case where someone's reversing into the classroom, so like I mentioned, I walked by that classroom the other day, and there's a teacher on the wall, that person is not charged for sick leave, because they are able to perform their duties remotely. We are trying to cover that room with someone from internally first, and if we have to get a substitute, we will do that. This is part of the unusual nature of managing the pandemic, and so I just want to share with you, the next time I will be bringing that recommendation, I will ask you to vote on that the next time, to be able to just add this, simply it would be five days of additional leave specifically for the pandemic. We've looked at this, again, we involved the NEA, Molly Wieselmann, our HR director, has looked at the data with me as well, and we determined that this five days is what we would need in the worst-case scenario to be able to get someone to long-term disability, should we need that option. So that is my report for this evening. It is, thankfully, we like solving problems here, because there's all sorts of things that we're trying to solve. It is going well. On balance, it is going as well as a person could expect, given the circumstances. But to think, again, I'm presenting to Rotary October 15th or something, and I was asked to come up with a title for it, and I think what I said was, anything but normal. How to Start a School Year Amongst a Pandemic, and other, bunch of other issues, so I wasn't, didn't have quite my author's naming hat on, but it is anything but normal. But the community should be so proud of how the staff have reacted, and they should be so proud of our students. The students are handling this very well, much better than I think many adults would have predicted for them to be able to handle. So that is my report for the evening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that people have.
Excellent, thank you. Amy?
I have three questions. First, do you have a sense of who didn't come to the family conferences, and/or why they didn't come? Can you talk about that?
We're still disaggregated in that data. It's a lot of data to go through, and we were, we would have that data just as we were kicking off the school year. So Instructional Services is preparing to look at that data further. We don't have a sense yet, but that is on our. We don't have a sense yet, but that is on our radar screen to dig deeper into the data.
My second question is about how lunches actually work. Are students eating in their classrooms, or are they all in the cafeteria? Did you find that they're ordering ahead of time, that there's less food waste happening?
Yeah, so I can't tell you quite yet about the food waste, but I can get you that information from Stephanie Strum. We are eating in the cafeteria. And this was a lot of discussion by the logistics committee this summer. And you're, you know that there are some places that are eating in their classrooms, not in Northfield, but other districts where they are. We made a conscious decision to eat in the cafeteria. And the reason that we did that is because the cafeterias are set up for that kind of activity. Classrooms are not. And what we know is we, we prefer not to have food in classrooms for a variety of different reasons. We also have two brand-new cafeterias that opened up and provide this ample space at Greenville Park and at Sibley Elementary to where we felt we could handle, even in the in-person model, with some really, our principals have knocked it out of the park with the way that they've scheduled and worked with their teams to develop a daily schedule. So they are eating in the cafeteria. There's very strategic, if you go into the, most of the cafeterias have an X on the seat where the kids can sit, and that's where you're sitting. In some cases, if they have to put more than a couple of kids at a table, they're using some of those desk dividers, those acrylic desk dividers to provide a little bit more safety, if you will. There's abundant disinfection, and it is, we feel that the cafeteria is the best place for kids to eat, because that's where it is now. There's been some trade-offs. At the elementary schools, for example, when they were weighing about how do we limit movement between the building, in the building, because that's where some school districts have said, we want to limit movement within the building, so we're going to have you eat lunch in your own classroom. Our elementary principals came together and came up with, I thought, was a very creative idea. Students are still going to specialist classes like physical education, music, art, and science. And so rather to reduce the amount of movement from the building, they adopted a schedule this year where students go to those classes for one hour at a time. So it used to be they'd go for 30 minutes at a time, but now by going to one specialist for an hour, you're mitigating an entire transition, which is a pretty big deal in that. So that was the trade-off. We want to be able to eat lunch, we want to in the lunchroom, we want to mitigate the amount of passing. So the trade-off is, we're going to have students go to their specialist for one hour clip, because that's going to limit the movement between the building that they normally would have done on the half an hour when they're in that specialist mode. So those, that's the rationale for why we did it the way that we did it. We just felt it was a more, a simpler process to go into the cafeteria than trying to get it to classrooms. And we did some corresponding offsets to be able to make that work within the framework of what we were looking in terms of mitigating or minimizing the movement in the building during the day.
Thank you. I have one last question. My third question was, you mentioned that 20 more students are looking to do portage. Do you have a sense of why that is?
Yeah, so those interviews are happening right now, and so we, I just heard that number, and I asked the same question of our staff to say, can we understand what the reason or what the rationale is? Don't have that for you yet, so can't answer that yet.
Thank you. Great. Noel, you had a question.
I want to express my appreciation for Dr. Hillman's positive comments about the district's operations. I guess when you're given lemon, you may as well make lemonade. But particularly that we're learning from the pandemic about there's other ways that we might be able to do something more effectively. And I think that's an opportunity that we have, and I thank you for being on top of it.
My pleasure.
Excellent, thanks, Noel. Other questions? Amy, Ellen?
I have one comment and one question. So my comment is, I've heard really good things from parents on the decision tree that has been really helpful. So it's, it's good that we have that as a resource. My question is, that so many, you know, at the beginning of the school year, we often see this in the consent grouping with change in assignments, but this year is just really unusual. So many are taking on, you know, different, going online, you know, almost everybody's got a different mix of things happening, might be different grade, a different course, they're going online, they're doing hybrid. So, you know, I really value what are, what all of the staff are doing in all capacities. So I'm wondering what sort of mentorship or the role, maybe the PLCs, or how are, how is that working with so many having to take on these different roles?
So I think our, that's a great question. I wish I could say that we had a very robust and intentional mentoring process for this, but we don't. What we have is, though, the investment that we've had in professional learning communities for over a decade has really spurred a sense of collaboration. And so I think that the people who are doing things differently, which everybody is doing things differently, the PLC for our teaching staff, that is really the engine, right? And the time that we had leading up to the beginning of the school year. So the fact that we are able to have those family conferences allowed us to actually remove things like Ready, Set, Go Day and some of the other things that would have taken time up during the traditional workshop week, which really allowed for people to be able to work together at the high school, for example, both the middle school and high school. The hybrid model really is a very different way of approaching teaching. And people have worked incredibly hard. If you drive by this parking on the weekend, you're going to see a half a dozen to a dozen cars here with people here doing work over the weekend to be prepared for the week. The collaboration that people have come together, the ideas, the way that they share with one another, the way that our building principals have intentionally put together that opportunity for collaboration, I think is what has led the best to us being successful so far. And I think the other part is our real attention to continuous improvement. The fact that everyone understands that we are giving you permission to try things, and if it doesn't work, no one's going to be mad at you. You're going to say, what worked, what didn't work, and how can we say what's next so we can keep improving it? So I wish I could say that we had a five-point strategy of intent. This, unfortunately, this environment has not allowed, that's why we went with things like guiding principles, as opposed to very specific and directive kinds of statements. So I think the things that we have been doing all along, that we have said, the investment in technology that we had, the investment in the training for that technology, the investment in PLCs to get people in a point where they're very comfortable being collaborative, all of those things have played huge dividends in this abnormal situation. And I think that's the best I've got for you, Dr. Iverson.
Thank you. Okay. Other questions or comments? Tom?
A question and a comment. For the additional five days of leave, is that, everybody gets five days of additional sick leave, or is it just people that they need it? And would that come out of any other special budget, or where do the funds come for that?
Yeah, so, Tom, how we look at that is that you would first need to use all of your own leave, right? Then you would need to be part of the sick leave bank, right? So let's say I was, was all of my, I used all of my own leave, and I had not joined the sick leave bank, then I'd be able to use that, those five days, but then I'm done, right? The fact would be that we would, I think the way we're at a frame is, you have to be part of the sick leave bank to actually access the pandemic leave, because the power of the sick leave bank is it's collaborative across the district. So the intent is, your own leave? Oh, well, actually, I'm sorry, I'll take that back. The first 10 days are from the federal government, from something called the Families' First Coronavirus Act. So the FFRCA, FF-CRA directed employers to provide every employee with 10 days of that FF-CRA leave. So that's the first. The first 10 days is that. Then you move to your own leave, right? And once I've exhausted my own leave, now I am going to the sick leave bank, which I can get up to 20 days. Then at the end, we'd be talking about a total of five days possible. We've calculated that it would affect very few people in the system, and it would, we hope that it would be something that will be in the second half of the year. We hope to not have to use it at all, obviously. And it's something that we would absorb into this year's budget. Now, we hope, right, that we see some additional coronavirus relief funds beyond the ones that end in December. We have, we have to submit that budget this week. There are some additional federal funds that are, can be used over multiple years. We look at this as an investment in our people, that if we do have someone who is in dire straits as a result of COVID-19, that at their moment of need, their employer has stepped up and helped them with a very small investment of five additional sick leave days. And again, it would only be in that case where you have exhausted all of those other things first.
Yeah, no, I totally agree with that. I was just curious, if there are like other federal funds or something else to kick in? And like you said, there may be. And so the only other comment is, so far, once again, the seniors are going to have a tough year, and like, I know one senior who was missing being able to leave school at lunch. Are there any, you know, hopefully this will end before the end of the school year, but if not, are there any consideration being given to making this year, again, special for the seniors?
I think if you're to talk to our high school administration, they always endeavor every year to make it special, you know, for our seniors. They're going to have to do, they're going to continue to have to do things in a different way this year. We just started Week Three, and so I know that the first two weeks are really focused on how do we make sure that we get these processes and procedures up and running. But I have the utmost confidence that Mr. Lear, just like he proved last spring, in terms of how the class of 2020 was honored with a number of different, we still have one thing on the plate for the class of 2020, the reunion, when we're able to safely do that. So I think that, you know, while it wasn't like it normally is last spring, I think there was a lot of celebration that was different. And I would anticipate that that same template will be applied as we move forward.
Thanks.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Okay. Well, thank you. And thank you, Noel, for the, for the work that we all support in terms of the work being done. Thank you. Okay. So we'll move on now to approval of the consent grouping. As a reminder, there were a number of personnel items in the table file to be added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? Did I have a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Ellen. Is there a second? Second by Amy. All those in favor of approval of the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on now to items for individual action this evening. We have three items. We'll begin with the resolution regarding transportation for extracurricular and co-curricular activities. That information was in your board packet. Because it's an item for individual action, I'd like to ask for a motion, and then we can have questions and comments. So is there a motion to approve the resolution regarding transportation for extra and co-curricular activities as presented? Moved by Rob. Is there a second? Second by Tom. Questions, comments about this resolution and its subject matter?
If I can just frame it.
Sure.
As we started off with just a few high school sports to start the year, and of course, today, football and volleyball did start. The Minnesota State High School League approved that at their Board of Directors meeting last Monday. In order to try to maintain social distancing on our buses and to away events, and then responding to some feedback from parents that we had, we've had parents who are asking, could I drive my child, you know, to the event? And as we looked at, our policy would not allow that. We allow you to take the child home from the event, but not to the event. So we've worked with our legal counsel to develop this resolution that would allow for this. And then everyone who would take advantage of it would need to sign a waiver. And so we think that this is a one-year piece to be able to serve, of course, families that would like to be able to transport their student directly to a contest, and then at the same time, help us with the number of students on the buses, so that we don't have to hire additional buses to be able to meet the 50% capacity requirement. So that is, that's what we're looking at, and again, I think it's a good move for this year, and it would just give us the authority to be able to handle that against the existing policy.
Questions? Noel?
If the district is changing its, so to speak, policy to allow that, does that also mean liability goes with it?
So that's the purpose of the waiver, Noel. The waiver that people sign very clearly indicates that the district would not be liable, would not incur that liability. You and I both know that that doesn't prevent someone from trying to make sure that you have liability, but we think this is a common sense solution in an abnormal year.
Excellent. Other questions, comments? Ellen?
So, thank you. I think this, like you said, I think, given the unusual circumstances, I think that this is a reasonable approach. What I'm wondering about is, it looks like the waiver will be per, per event, rather than for an extended period of time. And I was wondering, you know, who's, is this like Joel Olson's got this, I know he's, he's really good at operations, so did he have sort of a way of keeping track of this? Because that's when I look at this, I think, wow, this seems like sort of a nightmare to track.
Yeah, so what they are asking is, they're asking people to make the decision, my understanding is, for the entire season. So you'll see that on the permission form, it says off-campus activity or date or season of activity. A parent can simply write in there for the entire season, and then they're keeping track of that as they go along.
I have a follow-up, if that's the case. So I wondered about that. And then, while right now, the weather has been pretty good, we know that in the winter, or, you know, I think about a parent saying, sure, and then all of a sudden, the event is in Winona, and, you know, we've got, the buses can make it, but they're not comfortable with their student driver going, and they weren't planning on going. How did, is that, is there some stipulations for allowing for things like that?
Absolutely. I think, you know, we would use the reasonable person theory there and say, we need to get to this event, I can't, we would be able to accommodate that in almost every circumstance.
Okay. Thank you.
Great question, Noel. Amy?
Two things. I wanted the second, what Ellen was just talking about. That was the first question I had when reading the waiver, is, you know, as a parent, I know that you can't always promise that you're going to be able to drive the kid every single time. And so the flexibility needed to choose some games and not other games should be considered. And I know that complicates things, but I think it'll be much harder for parents to sign this if they're signing up for a whole time. Maybe there could be dates and calendars, and they can circle which ones they mean. Then the other comment I had is, with the actual resolution, I think this is an excellent idea, and their resolution does mention pandemic and COVID-19, but it doesn't actually give any dates on it. And I was just wondering if we needed to say something for the duration of the pandemic, or give some sort of end date to the resolution?
Yeah, I would, I would articulate that I would say that we simply could say that the resolution would end at the end of this academic year, at the end of the 2020, 2020. So I think if someone were to amend the motion to say that this is for the 2020, 21-year only, I think we'd be in good shape.
So I'd like to amend the motion to say that this is for only this academic year.
I think we say the 2021 school year, because there are some spring sports that may extend beyond the end of the academic year.
Okay.
All seconded? All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any questions on the amendment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Amendment carries. So the resolution will be adjusted to read effective for the 2021 school year. Okay, any other questions on the resolution? All right. Again, I want to thank Dr. Hillman and Anita Ozzy for their work on this. I do really appreciate that we're addressing parents' concerns and their wishes in terms of how they want to, you know, provide for the safety of their students, and as well as protecting the district and on this decision. So we have a motion and a second. It is a resolution for a roll call vote. Marania?
Aye.
Gerwitz?
Aye.
Hardy?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
Pritchard?
Aye.
Fennell?
Aye.
Stratton?
Aye.
Excellent. Motion carries. Okay, we will move on now to the approval of the gymnastics lease, and just as a reminder, there was a revised lease in the table file. Because this is an item for individual action, and we have Val here to answer questions, I will ask for a motion, and then we'll proceed with questions, comments. So is there a motion to approve the lease agreement between Northfield Gymnastics Club and Northfield Public Schools to commence on the date of assigning of a lease at a cost of $12,500 per year? Moved by Amy, seconded by Rob. Questions, comments for Val, who is here on the proposed gymnastics lease? Ellen?
So first, thank you so much, Val. I know that you've spent a lot of time on this over, over a couple of years now.
Yeah.
So what I'm curious about is, the lease looks pretty straightforward, but I know So what I'm curious about is the lease looks pretty straightforward, but I know in, when we had, um, in the past, some of the challenges had been, um, ability to use the facility during the meets, the use of the locker room. It looks like the schedule, there's this priority usage language, but I wasn't sure about some of the other pieces that we'd run into in the past.
Yep. So, um, I would say that they're, they've already actually been working on a schedule and I, I don't anticipate any issues this year. They're definitely aware of the, the needs of the program and have been taking that into consideration, which is great. Um, I, we did put in language, um, this is one of, one of the areas we've been probably tweaking the most, um, just to make sure that we're not revisiting any of the, the prior issues and concerns that we had. But I believe we put, um, that the parties agree to discuss and negotiate in good faith a schedule that may accommodate both users.
Mm-hmm.
And really by listing our priority usage, um, they're very much on board with what that means for, you know, having practice times after school and access to, um, locker rooms for changing and all those sorts of things. We discussed all of that, um, when I, I actually went to the club and, and talked with them about kind of the different things that we would be looking for, just to make sure we were on the same page. Um, and so we wanted, we wanted to make sure that the language covered enough, but wasn't so specific that we were locking anyone into anything that might not, um, work for a while. So I do think that, um, the board is very eager to, um, partner with us again, which we're, uh, very excited about. Um, and so I'm not anticipating any issues, but again, that is one of the reasons we are doing a one-year lease, just to make sure that we can work everything out, um, collaboratively. They've been really excellent to work with thus far, so.
Great. Thank you. Other questions, comments? Tom?
I don't know if it's a minor question or not, but will we have Wi-Fi access? Yeah, or does that need to be spelled out or then there's security and whatnot?
Um, I am not sure if they have Wi-Fi in the building. I would assume that they do, but I don't know that for sure. Um, I don't know that we would need it, um, spelled out if, if our students had our devices there, um, they're set up and managed in a way that, um, is responsible regardless of the internet that they're on. Um, yes, they do have Wi-Fi. The, the president of the board just texted me to let me know that they do have Wi-Fi. So, um, there's your answer for that, but I don't think that there should be concerns about that. From, from my perspective, I don't know if Dr. Hillman has other thoughts about that, but.
Yeah, I think that Wi-Fi is typically considered, it would depend upon what kind of Wi-Fi they have. If they have a public Wi-Fi, I would assume that we'd be able to utilize it like any other individual. It's not something we typically have spelled out in a lease. Um, and I think that it would be incumbent within the, the schedule and the usage discussion that Val was having.
Other questions or comments? I had, um, two, two questions. Um, the, um, lease levy, I'm assuming will be, um, less than $20 on an annual basis for taxpayers, um, on the lease levy?
Um, I didn't, I didn't have others do the calculation for this specific amount, um, but I would imagine it would be less than that for sure.
Yeah, I was recalling how the dome at approximately $90,000 in terms of our hours of usage was about $15 for the average home. So I'm assuming it's negligible, um, for our taxpayers. And then my other question is, does the after-school activities bus go to the gymnastics center?
Um, I believe it used to. Um, again, we haven't practiced there for a while, but I imagine that we would be able to add that to the row for sure.
Okay. And then, um, will our community education, um, recreation, community recreation look to be using that facility and are they open to, to expanding that usage to community ed recreation?
Um, they actually already are.
Oh.
Um, their programming started there on Saturday. Um, and that's, since that's a, a pretty minor, uh, it's like a six-week lease, we have not brought that one to the board for consideration. So working through, working through those pieces, but we worked, um, with the, the new board at the club to establish those parameters at the same time. Um, the high school one is obviously the one that we wanted to make sure the board was, um, in front of.
Excellent. Thank you. And I do apologize, you did, you did mention that when you teed up that this lease would be come forward in this, this board meeting. So thank you. Yes. And, and thanks so much. It has been a long couple of years. It's super exciting that our teams will, our team will be coming home. With that said though, we are grateful to Farmington for the way that they were able to work with us and it was really a, a great, um, location for our team and it was one that, um, really helped us out. And so, um, you know, we just are really, um, fortunate that they were there and that we had such a great partnership, but we are really looking forward to the, to the new partnership and for our teams, our team to come home, so to speak. So thank you.
Yeah. You're welcome.
Okay. So we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have approval gymnastics lease. Um, next item for individual action is the proposed 2020 payable 2021 property tax levy. Is there a motion to certify to county auditors the 2020 payable 2021 preliminary levy limitation and certification at the maximum authority? Moved by Noel. Is there a second? Second by Amy. Okay. Um, Val, um, I'm sorry, I should have had you do the presentation first. Okay. So we have a motion, a second, and we will have Val do the presentation. As a reminder, there was a tax impact statement in the table file that is part of Val's presentation. So I apologize for that. Val, thank you.
Not a problem at all. Um, so just a, a quick refresher on what our levy is and what it does for us. Um, so the levy is actually made up of three different funds. So we get funding for the general fund, for community education, and for our debt service. The levy does actually provide about 24% of our total general fund budget. Um, so it's very significant, um, in allowing us to maintain our programming. The debt service, um, as a reminder, we are required to levy 105% of our total debt payments. And so the levy for the debt service portion is nearly 100% of that budget. We have a little bit of state aid and some interest revenue, but that is the primary source for our debt service. It does include both voter-approved levies as well as state-authorized levies. Um, there's a, a combination of both in each of those. And then again, it's really an integral part of us being able to continue providing our world-class learning environment that we strive to do. Go to that spot. So just a, um, a little bit on the timeline. So we are required to certify the preliminary levy by September 30th and send that to both, actually all three of our counties that we have property in, as well as the Minnesota Department of Ed. They will take that information and we are certifying at the max, uh, which we have done for several years. And really all that means is we're certifying at the maximum that we can based on how the formulas are calculated. We can choose to under-levy between now and December when we do the truth and taxation hearing, um, but we can never go above that amount. Um, so that is something we've done, um, every single year since five-year ago. So the county will take the amount, um, on our preliminary levy and pull that into their formulas and basically generate the tax statements that will get mailed out in November. Um, that's your preliminary tax statement for the calendar year. In December, um, on the 14th, we will have our truth and taxation meeting, um, where we will have you certify the final levy. It typically will not change between now and December, um, unless we were to have some sort of election, which we are not, um, to increase the referendum or a bond or something like that. So there should be very few changes, if any, between now and December, um, but it gives that process, um, if we need it. And then once we certify it, then the, um, county will mail the final actual statements then in, um, in the spring. And so this is just a reminder on the, um, scheduling. So the tax year is actually January through December, but our fiscal year runs July through June. Um, so we are certifying right now, um, and estimating our revenue for nearly a year from now. So that does pose some challenges in my world to make sure we're estimating, um, and having a, a future lens on, but that's usually the way this works. So everything that we're certifying right now will actually be revenue for the 21, 22 school year. Go ahead. So this is just kind of a graph to show the breakout of the different funds. So the, the overall levy is just over $20 million. As you can see, the vast majority of that is the general fund levy, um, at 14.5 million. Community education is about 419,000 or 2% of the total and debt service is 5.4 million at 27%. And then of the general fund, you can kind of see how those break out, the referendum, um, our capital projects levy, which is a voter-approved levy, and then the general fund other at 6.3. And those percentages are of the total levy, not just of the general fund, um, just for clarity. And the general fund other, as a reminder, are things like the long-term facility maintenance, our operating capital, um, equity, the local optional revenue. There's a bunch of little formulas that, um, all go in to make that, that total. So this slide is an analysis and we're required to share with the community in these specific formats and breakouts of the levy, just, um, just so you know that that is why we do it this way. So by fund, you can see the change, um, from the certified levy for last year compared to the certified levy, um, or the proposed levy that we're agreeing for P21. Overall, we're looking at about a 2.25% increase, um, about $450,000 overall. And the most, the, the bulk of the increase is actually in the general fund. Um, community services and debt service were very close to the prior year. Um, and so the, the majority is driven by the general fund, which is multiple different, um, pieces, which I actually included on my next slide and I'll talk about it in a second, um, a, a different breakout that I haven't shown before that I think will be helpful to walk through that. Subtotals by truth and taxation categories. So the voter-approved and other, you can see we've got about 12.7 million dollars of our levy that is voter-approved and 7.7 million that is considered other or the state authorized levies. And then the bottom one is just by the tax base, so the referendum market value is 10.4 and that's really the, the market value that is used to calculate the referendum, um, revenue. And then the net tax capacity is 9.9 and that is pretty much, um, most of the other formulas, if that makes sense. You can go ahead and then go to the next one. So this is a different view of the levy that I've not shared before, so hopefully the additional details helpful, um, and kind of understanding where the pieces come from. So I broke out the general fund, um, by the major line items that we see and how they're different from last year to this year. So the referendum, the primary increase there is the inflationary increase. We are still in declining enrollment, so the numbers are down slightly, but the, um, inflationary increase was offsetting enough to have a small increase in that, um, in that line item, so that was helpful. Um, the ones that I do want to point out, um, which I addressed in my narrative, um, that was in your packet, is the annual OPA, which is other post-employment benefits. So you can see that's a $90,000 increase. That is a levy that we can do for any, um, any health and dental and post-employment benefits we pay for any contracts that have a sunset clause. And so we do have a sunset clause for, um, retirement benefits in our agreement with the Northfield Education Association. So any payments we're paying on behalf of our retired teachers, um, are payments that we can code to that. So that includes actual direct payments for health plans as well as the implicit rate calculation that our actuary calculates for us and, and severance payments. And we're able to do the severance payments because they are sent directly to a retirement HR and not a cash payment to the employee, uh, to the retiree. So those three components are what make up that formula. Um, and we, I work with our actuary, which is Healy Incorporated, um, every year to kind of calculate this number. If we have more retirements in one year, um, those numbers can swing. Um, the implicit rate is obviously based on the number of retirees we have and that, um, calculation that they go through. So there's a lot that goes into that, um, but it's a bigger number in that calculation, so I wanted to talk a little bit about that. The reemployment insurance, which is, um, also just unemployment insurance, the, the levy actually labels it reemployment. We are obviously expecting a significant increase in our unemployment insurance. However, we have not actually received an invoice that we've needed to pay from the state, um, since the first quarter. Um, so I know they are working through finalizing all of the federal funding and different supports that they receive to help support unemployment. Um, and so we're anticipating an increase, but we're really not sure quite how much. One of the first invoices we got was for $67,000, um, but that came shortly with a note that said, don't pay this yet. Um, so we don't know after the adjustments where that's gonna land, so we're building in an increase, um, because as a reminder, they can go back three years and make adjustments. And so I didn't want to come to next year's levy and have a really significant add to the levy. Um, so we know it's gonna increase, um, so building in a reasonable increase to avoid future, um, larger adjustments is, um, the reason for that. And then the other thing that I mentioned, all the, all the rest are fairly straightforward. Um, the decline in the lease levy is due to the change with the, um, lease for the shop building that we purchased. Um, so that, that lease, um, we did do the lease financing through others. Um, so we are leasing it still or making lease payments for the building that we purchased, but it was actually less than what we were, um, paying for the lease through leasing. So, um, just a reminder about that. And then the abatement is another piece. So you'll see that's about $60,000, um, on the general fund and it was actually about another $40,000 in the debt service fund. And so I, I talked with Rice County about that because that has historically been a much smaller number. And, um, the information that I got was really that it's related to utility companies and their ability to, um, basically question or challenge their valuation of their properties. Um, the state commissioner values it. Rice County indicated that it's kind of a known statewide concern that counties have been discussing, um, but that's the current process. So there was a, about 100,000 of additional, um, taxes that had been abated then that we, um, that we get to levy for. So that's just an automatic inclusion on the levy. So overall, you can see 20.4 million dollars, um, is the proposed levy, um, or 2.25% increase. So you can go to the next slide. And then this, this gives you a little bit of history. Um, so overall, I would say very reasonable increases, um, very consistent. Uh, the pay 18 increase of the 23.62 was the voter-approved referendum increase. Go ahead. So in summary, just kind of an important So in summary, just kind of the important takeaways, overall about a $450,000 increase or 2.25%. Declining enrollment does impact multiple formulas, but overall, the impact was, didn't offset some of the other increases that we saw. The referendum inflationary increase was helpful. Again, we anticipate an increase in the reemployment insurance levy, and that levy is paid at 100% of our expenditures, so whatever we end up getting charged and paying for that is what will eventually come through on the levy. So just here where that is, 100% reimbursed. And then the abatements totaling roughly $100,000, which was not usual event this year. So this is just a snippet of the page that I included in your table file. The disclosures on the bottom of this are very important. Others doesn't like it when I cut it off because knowing the whole picture is important, but overall, on the far-right-hand side, you can see all of the negative amounts, the negative percentages. That is a great place to be in. So what that means is even though our preliminary levy is going up $450,000 due to the increase in our tax base, so the market values have increased at a rate basically exceeding the increase in our levy, every category is anticipating a tax reduction. The big caveat for this one is this is always assuming that your valuation stayed the same, which we know is not the case for most properties. But in theory, you could interpret this that if your home value increased, let's say you had a $200,000 home, if your home value increased 3.7%, you would be paying exactly the same amount of taxes for the school district that you did last year, if that makes sense, the dollar amount only changed. So overall, this is a great place to be in. It means we've got strong market growth and development happening in the community, which benefits everyone. Go ahead. And that's all I have, so I would gladly entertain any questions to my pack.
Excellent. Thanks, Val. Questions, comments? Amy?
Val, thanks again for all your work pulling this together and making it somewhat understandable. I just had a question about abatements. I just still don't, that's one part I don't understand exactly how the utility companies do. Can you explain that a little bit more?
I will explain it to the best of my ability. So my understanding, so the process of abating your taxes is, I would say, similar to a homeowner getting their valuation and having, let's say, a 20% increase. If you felt your home wasn't, had not increased in value by 20%, you can appeal the valuation and basically get it reduced, assuming that you meet the qualifications and that sort of thing. So my understanding is that because the commissioner of revenue is assessing these properties all over the state, I guess there's, I would say there's differences in the valuation from maybe what Rice County would have assessed as the value. And they basically have their attorneys take that to court to say, no, it was not worth $12 million, it's only worth $9 million. If those are approved, then they pay taxes on $9 million instead of 12, so basically they pay less taxes. We still have to collect the dollar amount that we're certifying, and so it ends up being an add to the overall levy. So these are historical abatements because it's obviously kind of behind the eight-ball process. But it's basically they got to pay less taxes, and then everyone else is kind of picking up a piece of that pie, if that makes sense. That's my best explanation.
Thank you. Actually, it makes some sense. Thank you.
Okay.
That was a great explanation, Val. Thank you, because I had that same question. Helen?
So you answered one of my questions, which was, I was curious with, we've all seen what's going on in the housing market, and so it was really nice to have this additional handout. You alluded to the declining enrollment, and I wondered with, if you, it's always difficult to forecast and to understand this, but I didn't know with COVID and the online opportunities if we were seeing more of a decline because students can go anywhere, or the opposite, where we have more open enrollment because of how we've been able to manage the situation.
So we had an initial enrollment report probably, let's say, a week ago, maybe a week and a half ago. Obviously, we like to wait till we've got students as much in person as we can right now during a pandemic, but just to make sure we kind of flushed out the ones that maybe had forgot to tell us they were going, so. So our initial report showed we definitely had quite a bit of movement, I would say, lots going in and out for various reasons, but at the end of the day, I would say our net is showing about a 17-student increase from what I had projected. So it might not look exactly the same by grade level or, you know, portage versus non-portage, which obviously I wasn't even projecting portage at that point, but overall, it's actually looking slightly higher than what I projected, and so that's a great place to be in. I was pretty concerned while I was on leave that we were going to be way under. I do know there are other districts that are hundreds of kids less than they were projecting because they chose to go to a different online-only option. So I think we've made a lot of good decisions, and those decisions allowed students to stay and make a choice that was right for them and their families, but still be connected to our district, which is great. So overall, I would say right now it's looking pretty close to what I had projected for this school year. Again, this levy is for revenue next year, and so I'm projecting even a year further, which is obviously challenging to do, but for this year, it's looking pretty close.
Great. Other questions or comments? I just had one question. I really liked the breakdown that you gave us, Val, the new one. That was great. I had a question about lease levy. The NCRC lease is out of there, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so that's okay.
So that was part of the decline as well?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right. So excellent. So I had preempted Val's presentation with a motion and a second. So do we have all those in favor of approving the certification to county auditors to the 2020 payable 2021 preliminary levy limitation and certification at the maximum authority? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that is all of our items for individual action. Dr. Hillman, items for information, we have construction update. You're at number 33.
It's amazing to see number 33. Again, you can't see those check marks enough with those completed projects. Longfellow continues to work. Asphalt was poured there last week, so they got that poured, and the parking lot is striped, so that's good. And then I've seen some initial photos of the demolition of where the district offices will be relocated. That is on track as well. Construction should begin this week there. Conusmo, they continue to work on punch list items at the existing, at the new facilities or the renovated facilities, and we held our virtual meeting, our project oversight committee, last Tuesday. So we continue working through these things, and we're fewer and fewer items on the punch list, and real exciting to see the changes at Longfellow as we keep moving forward. So not as much as we usually have in the construction update, but we're okay with that.
Any questions or comments on construction update? All very exciting stuff. Okay. And thanks to Anita for arranging the tours for board members next week. No, first one's starting on Friday, so thank you. Then our next item is the National School Lunch Program, which has been a focus for all of us of late.
So just want to share with the board that the National School Lunch Program serves 30 million children every school day, and President John Kennedy created the National School Lunch Week in 1962 to promote the importance of a healthy school lunch in a child's life and the impact it has inside and outside of the classroom. And the COVID-19 pandemic has shown the incredibly important role that school meals play for students and their families. So very appropriate, National School Lunch Week to be scheduled October 12th through the 16th. And again, I think that, I've said before, that schools, I think, in my opinion, have been one, if not the, most effective unit of government since March 13th, when we declared a national emergency for the COVID-19 pandemic. And you saw the numbers of what our child nutrition department has served, and they've had to rethink how they serve meals. They've had to rethink the kinds of things that they're able to serve and send home to families, and the level of customer service has been unparalleled. So I hope that we will all take another level, take our celebration of National School Lunch Week to a whole other level because I think that they have certainly earned it this year.
Absolutely. I mean, it's just, it's just really astounding what they have done and how they have continued to do it for months and what they will continue to do for the months ahead. So we are very grateful to Stephanie Strummy and her staff.
Yeah, if you don't know how lucky we are to have Stephanie Strummy and the kitchen managers that we have, then we haven't been doing our job because they are doing amazing work.
Okay, thank you. So that's our items for information, future board meetings. In the month of October, we have Monday, October 12th, and Monday, October 26th. In November, Monday, November 9th. All of those are regular school board meetings held on Northfield High School Media Center and via Zoom at 7:00 PM. Just a reminder, we will have a special board meeting via Zoom on Friday, November 13th at 1:00 PM to certify the canvassing of the results of the election, and that's based on the timeline of mail-in balloting. We are not able to, as you know, certify that in our normal process, so we'll be doing that on Friday, November 13th, and it appears that the counties are still committed to that date of Friday, November 13th as being a date that we can do that. So thank you, everyone, for a great meeting and excellent questions and discussion. With that, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Noel. Is there a second? Second by Jeff. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.